I'd like to call this meeting from order on select board March thirty first, twenty twenty five at five thirty. additions and deletions proposed agenda. All right. Citizens comment on anything else that we're going to discuss tonight. Hey, um. And we're going to have a public hearing and possible vote down the transmittal draft. Will propose amendments to the town zoning regulation five thirty six B on farm restaurant. Um. Ben, you've got a short present, a short presentation, then we'll take comments in the public.
Do I need a mic or can you hear?
We can hear you.
It's smart enough now.
Here you are.
All right, so I'll be brief.
Ben, just announce your name.
Oh, sorry, Ben Polly, Planning Commissioner Chair or Planning Commission Chair. Um, so just as a brief overview, you guys, the select board asked us to look at five thirty six B three B. Um, to make sure that the language follows the purpose of the regulation. And uh, and we looked at that in effort to either look at that language which says the footprint of the restaurant building should not exceed twenty nine square feet. And either to keep, remove, change the amount of square feet or come up with other some kind of solution. So just as a kind of refresher, our goal here is, as the planning commission is really just to make a recommendation for your. Legislative body on a proposed by law amendment. And I really kept it focused to our discussions on that specific thing that you asked us for. So we started discussions on June twelfth. It took us seven meetings, kind of go through. Um, you know, we had a zoning administrator change, so we had some kind of learning opportunities of how. Our regulations should work and how to hold meetings and votes. But if we did take seven meetings in that time, we engaged the committee for feedback. We looked at other zoning bylaws. That controlled the character of areas such as site plan and conditionary use. Reviews, I talked to Act two fifty district coordinator. And we studied comparative size agricultural buildings. And then on November sixth, we voted a five to zero to approve our recommendation. We had one person absent from that meeting. And I just want to point out, we started every meeting, kind of really making the point that our recommendation was not in response to any specific project, but really about all potential on farm restaurants and I have full confidence. In myself as chair and board that that vote reflected that objective view of this by law amendments recommendation. So just really quickly, we looked at buildings. This is kind of a graphic of what twenty eight hundred square foot looks like in ten acres and what it looks like in five acres. Um, and then we did a study of other agricultural buildings in the area. So I think I looked at ten or twelve different ones scattered around Woodstock. And did an analysis on Google Maps or Google Earth. You can kind of measure on square or footprint of a building on Google Earth. And kind of looked at real live measurement data, just to make sure how accurate is it? Just so I could kind of surmise on certain buildings that I, that were our private properties that I didn't feel comfortable measuring their barns. What that size was about really comfortable that I was being very conservative on the side estimate. So you can kind of go through them, Eric. Kind of smattering around again, these are all pretty either very visible on major roads or that I had access to. And um, I don't have to go through every single one. Some of them you'll recognize, but the overarching thing is that there's four things that really popped out. One that's for several things that really popped out. There are many large structures in our agricultural settings that are well over twenty eight hundred square feet. Many times twenty eight hundred square feet. There are are buildings that are over twenty eight hundred square feet. That aren't visible and completely hidden from public view. There are. A lot of even non agricultural buildings, private homes, other buildings, commercial businesses that have buildings that are much bigger than twenty eight hundred square feet. And so this size goes, so some of these, you know, are just around twenty eight hundred square feet. Uh, that was three thousand on the left, that's four thousand on the right. Um, again, all kind of big barns. It really, when you look at historic growth in Woodstock, this is a good one, Maplewood Farm on River Road. Again, very large structure, over five thousand square feet. When it built, it was very visible, but now with screening, you can't see it really from the road at all. And a lot of buildings, historic buildings, especially farm buildings have been built up over times. And even at uh, King Hill Farm, their house and their barn were both kind of above that twenty eight hundred square foot. Um, and they just get added on over time, more use. Different uses, and so sometimes you can just get extremely large structures. And in my opinion, all of them feel to scale in an agricultural setting. And no point that I ever feel that any of them were out of scale or appropriate to the setting that they were in. So um. There are. So those, that was kind of the findings that kind of led us to our main conclusion that. The. Um, any size limitation to address size and scale twenty eight hundred square feet. Really wasn't an effective measurement to the impact of a rural character from the aesthetic standpoint or point of view. Again, non visible locations, and it really would unduly restrict the adaptive reuse of large existing agricultural structures. Unknown original intent of the regulations. Again, we were looking at it from a clear. Fresh out of eye, so while we don't really know what the intent was, our interpretation is that no matter what the intent was, is how would we write this if we were starting over? So um, twenty eight hundred square feet, much less any specific side deemed arbitrary and really couldn't be justified. Whether you would raise it or lower it or keep it. And really, since extremely large structures. Can exist in agricultural context and not come on its scale. It really was the other existing controls of the regulations that are more significant and effective in limiting the impact to the area. And those kind of specifically are hours of operation, days per week. There's also outdoor capacities, lasting times, frequency of outdoor events and occupancy limits. Both really affect much more ultimately how a business or current business would affect an area. In an agricultural setting. And then our own regulations, site plan and conditionals have a lot of language in there about character of the area, making sure that something is appropriate. And in talking with Act two fifty. Act two fifty has a whole another layer of. Eye sight on how a building. And it's a context and they have, they have a much more rigorous. Uh, way of going through it than even our conditionals and site plan review go through. And almost all on farm restaurants would likely go for an act two fifty review. There's a few exceptions, especially if it's on ten acres or more, it's kind of what triggers post activity. Permits. There's very small exceptions to what could go through there. So again, felt very confident that that five zero vote was really our best foot forward in putting a very objective view on how to. Put a recommendation on five thirty six B three B. Has any questions?
Any question?
I'm going to wait till after.
Thank you.
What, how much are you getting?
Any comments? Is there a number of people that are here, we're going to hold everyone to three minutes? Okay, and then if you have time. Sorry, I'll take a page away.
No, I highlighted.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy Marinin, our knowledge, Stock President. I shared these comments with the planning commission. Um, I sent a written, in written form, a verbal summary. And I also submitted it to you all on email, so you could see. There's a lot of examples in detail that I'm not going to go into. But what I did um, is I attended not every single one, but most of the planning commission meetings and I read the minutes. And I want to make some, a few very specific. Of comments that relate to the decision. Because I think we, we will lose something if we let go of this square footage, and this is why. There, the first premise. Is that we don't know, you know, that the confusion is to where this language came from in the zoning regs. I went through the entire town zoning regulation. And I found the use of square footage to describe in a specific context, relationship and size. To other buildings, so it's always contextual. Um. So twenty four sections in the zoning regs and square footage measurements were used sixty eight different times. And the range was two square feet to forty thousand, six hundred and fifty square feet in terms of reference. My point being, over time, these regulations have been curated by multiple commissioners. And square footage is used consistently, I would argue, and all the examples are at the end of your document. And then the second premise was, and is noted in the summaries, that twenty eight hundred square feet seems arbitrary. And what I want to bring the point back in is that the scale of the on farm restaurant is restaurant. Is meant to be in relationship to a whole farm. So of course, there are bigger buildings, but the idea is we don't build a building the same size as the biggest farm to have a restaurant. The, the idea is we're maintaining a relationship of size and scale. And I'm really not sure how you can do that just with number of seats and hours of operation. Mind you, I have a very visual orientation, my point is three D. So I'm concerned about losing that. Premise three is that we can defer to the conditional use process approval and or active act two fifty. But at least in the conditional use approval, it circles right back to the regs first. It doesn't address scale in a three D environment, relationship, again, it's relationship in a context.
Can you just quickly finish up?
Yep, and then the last point, four, comment is um. All right, now we've, we all lost, right?
That was the plan.
There it is, okay. Um. Again, the, the, the human scale was the driving force in early Vermont architecture. And buildings have evolved and grown and developed, but it's on a human scale. If we don't restate some starting point in scale in relationship to other buildings, mind you, it's an accessory. Function, it's not the primary, it's in relationship. And then I would argue.
All right, Wendy.
In an existing farm, one sentence, one sentence please, in an existing farm, you could add a clause where there's already a barn. That inside the building. Thank you very much.
Anyone online? I'm not seeing anyone yet, but their hand raised, okay.
Yeah, well, let's see, in Woodstock. I sat through a number of the planning commission meetings and. Uh, there were several folks that were trying to explain that, well, if this was an arbitrary setting. Of twenty eight fifty square feet, whatever the exact number is. What about the other factors that went into it? Is five nights a week, is that arbitrary? What was the basis of that? The hours of operation? Any of the other factors that are built into that as a concept? Become questioned, or it should be questioned and looked at again with fresh eyes. This whole process of this change, oh, and, and is, is there an aquifer underneath? In that area that feeds the water of the town of Woodstock? That I didn't realize at the time. Thank you, Charlie Kimball, for your video that made it clear that the water is right there. Between the Barnet Brook and the Gulf Stream is the water that feeds this town. So if we're talking about development in, 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 in an area, is it sitting on an aquifer? That's as an aside, but I think. The board should look back at the, the, the way this thing got set up, the speed that it got pushed through. We didn't have a meeting because of COVID, as I recall, they weren't, we weren't anxious to have public meetings. And I believe a number of things like this. Uh, the number of nights. It was mentioned at one of the meetings about, I think you brought up the farm table in Chesapeake, right? Was that, you didn't bring up, sorry. But that's two nights a week, only in season, August, September and into October, the harvest period, two nights a week. So what's appropriate and really should get thought back through again. Uh, and take advantage of that. Are we just going to change a square footage for one particular place? Since we're not talking about a particular place. Let's think about all the other factors, and if you live in an R five. Whether five nights a week is something that you'd want to have to ten P M plus closing, close up time, et cetera, et cetera. So this is an opportunity for the board to. Reconsider the entire concept of that amendment and, and think it through. Again, I thought it was good that they started it with the square footage, but I think there's the other factors as well.
Thank you. Anyone online, anyone else?
Roger Logan, Woodstock. I don't want to get into the arcana of twenty eight hundred square foot here or occupancy or anything else there. I think the question before this board is, are we going to have any kind of business like this in this town? Or are we going to make it impossible? There, this process has been going on for years. And probably hundreds, if not thousands of hours of meetings. It's time to put it to bed, one way or the other. Either we tell the world that Woodstock will not allow businesses of this kind, or we, we. Make it possible for businesses of this kind to function. Thank you.
School moving on, school moving online, right? Yeah, no, I, oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm as ready as they hand this to me online.
I want to give everyone a.
My name is Chris Boyle, I represent Tom Meyer and Cynthia Volk, who live on Pomper Road. I was very open with you all in my written comments, and I was hoping we could use tonight maybe as a dialogue. And to the extent there's information I don't have or something I've overlooked, I would be happy to receive it. Because from my position, I think it's pretty clear what happened here. Peacefield Farm had a problem. Peacefield Farm got in touch with the Director of Planning and Zoning. And Peacefield Farm and the Director of Planning and Zoning then worked together to develop a seemingly straightforward solution to Peacefield's problem. I, I don't, and you now have that seemingly straightforward solution in front of you all in the form of the proposed amendment. There is no doubt it's straightforward. Peacefield's problem is its footprint is bigger than twenty eight hundred square feet. And ripping the twenty eight hundred square foot limitation out of section five thirty six certainly fixes that problem. The issue is doing that is unconstitutional. You all specifically referenced contact from Woodstock residents as your prompt to go to the planning commission. And ask them to take a look at five thirty six B three B. All of the contact I have seen specifically related to Peacefield Farm. Or was opposed to five thirty six being changed at all? Is there other contact that the select board had that was not related to Peacefield Farm?
Will, we have some questions.
I, I mean, I'm just, I am, you know, I, I told you all where I think this is headed, and I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult or challenging. And certainly, if you don't want to have a dialogue, I, I can't force you to answer questions. But it would be helpful to me and my client's perspective as we look at what seems to be a clear instance of spot zoning. If there was some contact that was not specifically related to Peacefield Farm, it, it would certainly be helpful to know about. In that same vein. I asked repeatedly in front of the planning commission, as did other Woodstock residents. Why does the review have to be limited to section five thirty six B three B? And the planning commission's response was, that's what the select board told us to look at, so that's what we're doing. I ask you all, why did the review have to be limited to section five thirty six B three B? Which again, is the one specific element of this regulation that was a problem for Peacefield. I see no reason why the on farm regulations could not have been reviewed as a whole. The reasons that Ben from the planning commission identified tonight. Many large structures over twenty eight hundred square feet, ag structures that get larger over time, non visible locations. And unknown original intent of five or thirty six B three B. There's nothing in there that precludes the planning commission from taking a look at this regulation as a whole. Unless, as seems to be clearly the case from the email correspondence. That the goal here was just to fix Peacefield's problem and never to take a holistic look at the regular.
You go, just finish up.
Never to take a holistic look at the regulation, regulations. I see no downside to taking a step back and having the planning commission evaluate the on farm restaurant regulations as a whole. There is a very obvious downside to plowing forward with the process in which there is a clear line linking Peacefield's problem. The Director of Planning and Zoning, a seemingly straightforward solution, and the amendment you all now have in front of you. So I urge you to just press pause and please take a step back. Thank you.
Any other questions and comments?
Michael Stone of Woodstock. I remember lots of public meetings before the select board, which included some of you. Where we talked about the on farm restaurant amendment, which was proposed by Woodstock residents. Supported by hundreds of Woodstock residents. And lots of people who don't, don't vote here, Woodstock voters, I will say. And supported by lots of people who don't vote here but have a stake in our town. So the reason that we are being asked to go back and revisit this whole amendment. Is because the people who opposed the amendment didn't get what they wanted. But hundreds of Woodstock voters who brought their concerns to you did in fact, get what we wanted. So we, we really appreciate that. We believe when, when the select board passed over that, the on farm restaurant amendment. That, that would, the, the twenty eight hundred square foot footprint language in the proposal. In, in, in the amendment would mean the square footage that was open to the public. That turned out not to be the case. We're asking for redress of a simple mistake, that's all we're asking for, and thank you for your consideration.
Any other comments?
I have.
Any questions?
Yes, I have some, I have a question, Ben. My concern is enforceability. And, you know, it's great that we have a five thousand square foot barn out there, but how are you going to limit that to a hundred people? And if that was something that was important to the planning commission. I guess I personally would have rather seen an approach of, you know, what does a hundred seat restaurant look like? Is it twenty eight hundred? Is it some other, because we're not talking about a specific building? What, what does that look like? And my concern with this as drafted is that you're passing enforcement issues onto neighbors. You know, while a five thousand square foot barn might be of scale as an agricultural building, once you turn that into a restaurant. The attendant parking and traffic issues certainly make it not really viable in a rural area. If you're going to have multiple nights and more than a hundred people. And I think without something that limits it when people apply as to size. My concern is that it just becomes a nightmare. I mean, we already have, you know, police sitting with decibel meters at, at weddings at the end. Trying to make sure our ordinances are enforceable, and I just hate to see people having to do head counts in restaurants.
So, Ben, you want to come up and, yeah, please. I mean, I mean, you took my example out of my mouth. The decibel rating is a good example of something that I don't think anybody would want to get rid of a decibel rating just because it's hard to enforce and it requires somebody to be there. But it's very important. You know, you mentioned, why did we have the recommendations? I'll just, we didn't recommend any other part of the. Bylaws or the five thirty six. So um, the enforceability, yeah, unless you actually can measure it. Uh, beforehand, and it's approved from plans, does require. You know, boots on the ground or neighbors doing it, and that's, I think, any regulation that's in our bylaws or ordinances are going to reflect that. That doesn't mean a square footage. Would have been an effective way to control that because. The elements of parking that you're talking about. That should have been discussed already through the site plan approval. Whether the capacity could do it, act two fifty definitely knew it was in much more depth about what the parking restrictions are. There are specific measurements on parking about how far away the parking has to be, has to be a thousand feet away from the nearest residence. Or five hundred feet, I think nearest residents, outdoor events have to be like a thousand feet. So there are some measurable parts of that. But the size of the restaurants. Again, at twenty eight hundred square feet is an aesthetic control. Right, so it's scale. Because if you're capped at a hundred people, whether you have a five thousand square foot building or a thousand square foot building. Your impact to the neighborhood is the same. Um, it's really about the number of people coming to that, the amount of traffic it's generating. It's not um. Being controlled by a square footage, so even if we had a square footage in there at any level, and there are restaurants. That. Uh, when we look at restaurants, per square footage, again, it beats into a point that the adaptive reuse of existing structures wouldn't be accounted for. Because there, many of them are much larger, like the farms at Billings Farm, you know, there's ten thousand square foot barns over there. So, you know, those things are not accounted for when you put a square footage requirement on there in scale. That makes sense?
Yeah, I still think it's an issue, but.
Yeah, I mean, you, you could look through the bylaws and any ordinance that we have in anything that's not, you know, a physical space. Needs to be kind of enforced in some way.
But as, as Wendy pointed out, there's, there's a ton of references in the, in the bylaws where things are dictated to be certain square feet.
But those are, yeah, but those are relating to an aesthetic, like a two square foot, that's a two square foot sign. So that's a very measurable thing, you can impact a twenty, a square footage in agricultural setting is much different than a square footage requirement in a dense urban. Environment like the village, and so again, I don't think a size requirement in agricultural R five district. Is a really appropriate way to control the impact to an area.
Any other questions? Are we ready to vote on this, or do you want to put it off for another meeting?
I'm, I'm prepared to vote. I've, I've.
I will.
I said I can vote, that's fine.
I will entertain a voting to approve. The ordinance. Which.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ready, you want to just say the, I was going to, but Kerry was quicker than I was. Want to say what, uh. The president, the on, the by law amendment to change the square footage under five thirty six B. You still?
I, yes.
If there's a second. Polls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion has been passed, the ordinance has been passed, four to one. Motion has been passed, ordinance has been passed, four to one. Thank you for all everyone. I'd like to throw a motion to enter executive session under one V S A. Everyone. Just making an emotional executive session, just so we can have some quiet, so we can get around the gentleman. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to throw a motion to enter executive session under one V S A two one three. Discuss potential contracts that have to make a specific findings to make sure general public knowledge is clearly placed the public body. A person of all their substantial disadvantage. You're a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a responding executive session.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Good journey.
So moved.
Second? We urge all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.